Chris.
Chris Volkers.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Hi.
We run a tight ship around here. I almost messed that one up.
That's all right.
Okay, Andrew. Okay, everybody. Welcome to the Oakdale City Council Regular Meeting, March 8th, 2020. Kathy, would you do roll call, please?
Councilmember Inga Breton.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Swedberg.
Here.
Councilmember Zabel.
Here.
Mayor Ranky.
Here. Please join me now on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. Counselors, in front of you is the printed agenda. Is, are there any, any changes you'd like to see?
One change under Chris's section, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'd like to propose a change under Administrator Report. I have a resolution I'd like you consider approving, and I can explain it at the time.
Very good. Do we need a motion on all that? Yeah, we need a motion.
I think for the amended.
Have a motion then for the amended agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the agenda is amended. Next up on the agenda is the approval of minutes. In front of us tonight, we have two sets, one from the Oakdale City Council Workshop, February 22, the other from the Oakdale City Council Regular Meeting of February 22. Taking that workshop one first. Upon review, counselors, did you see anything you wanted to question or change? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'm moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the meeting minutes are approved as presented. That second set of meeting minutes is the, from the regular meeting. Counselors, any questions or things that you'd like to see changed? Could I have a motion then, please?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Then those meeting minutes are approved as presented also. So next up on the agenda is the Hadley Vacation Right-of-Way, or the vacation of the right-of-way on Hadley. And I think, Andy, are you gonna take us through this? Good evening, Mr. Gitzler. Gitzloff.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna ask, can we get the document cam queued up? So the item before us, and this is a public hearing because it is a vacation of right-of-way, although it is one property owner on both sides of the vacation. And just to illustrate this graphic here, this is Hadley, Hadley Avenue, just where the entrance to the Fleet Farm is. And once the road was redone, this is basically a remnant parcel. The applicant's asking to vacate it to make one whole parcel for future development plans. There are some plans for a performance theater on this site and adjacent site. We haven't received an actual application for that yet, so that would have to be reviewed, comply with zoning ordinance, and come back at a later date. The applicant did want to make sure that they can make this into one parcel first. The only one condition that staff would, is requesting be added is that a drainage and utility easement be, remain over the place of where that vacation is. And most likely, this is gonna be a parking area, or would be a parking area for anything that would be built on that site. I'd be happy to answer any questions before the public hearing.
Counselors, you anything for Andy? Andy, my one question was that the sewer line that's shown there, I believe that's a sanitary, or is that storm? And that would remain, is my assumption, right?
Yes, it would remain. Believe it's a sanitary, but yeah, it would, we would keep it there.
Yeah. So then it is a public hearing, you say?
Yes.
So at this point, I'm gonna open up to the public hearing, open up the public hearing to comments from the audience. Anybody that would like to comment on this item, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and then share your information. So open up to anybody that wants to make comment. And then finally, is there anybody in the audience who would like to make comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Are there any other comments from the council? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make motion waiving, adopt resolution number 2022 approving the vacation of the Hadley Avenue North right-of-way, north of 56th Street, as shown on the attached exhibit.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion passes as presented. Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Next up on the agenda is time for open forum. Open a forum is a chance for anybody that's in the audience who would like to comment to the council about things going on in Oakdale. You're welcome to do so, and are encouraged to do so. So the process we use is having the person come to the podium, state your name and address, and then share your thought. Is there anybody that would like to comment about anything tonight? Seeing none, I'm gonna close that portion and talk about a proclamation, and really read a proclamation. And this is about the Arbor Day Tree Giveaway. So the proclamation goes as follows: "Whereas the City, Oakdale City Council supports the planting of trees and encourages residents to landscape their properties with trees. And whereas, in 1975, resident Peter Graski was instrumental in establishing the city's first Arbor Day Tree Giveaway. And whereas, 2022 marks the 47th anniversary of Oakdale's Arbor Day Tree Giveaway and celebration. And whereas, Arbor Day is a time to appreciate the important contributions made by trees and to continue to increase the numbers in our community. And whereas, this year's Arbor Day Tree Giveaway will be held on Saturday, April 30th, at 9:30 in the morning at Walton Park. Therefore, I, Paul Ranky, Mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, hereby proclaim April 30th as Peter Graski Arbor Day Tree Giveaway in the city of Oakdale, and call upon the residents of the community to plant trees for the enjoyment and health of our generation and generations to come. In witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Oakdale to be fixed on this 8th day of March, 2022." Very cool.
Yeah.
So again, everybody that's watching, this is the Arbor Day Tree Giveaway, and we give away, I'm gonna say thousands, but it's definitely hundreds.
Yes.
And think about this, 47 years, it's pretty amazing. So please, please come. There will be information on the website and on our social media pages about how to participate. Next up on the agenda then is consensus motions. In front of us, we have A through G. Counselors, were there any that you want to pull?
Mayor, like to pull G, please?
G. Anybody else wanna pull anything? Could I have a motion then for consensus motions, A through F?
I'll make motion to approve consensus motions, A through F, as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, sorry.
Opposed? So the consensus motions, A through F, are approved as presented. Councilmember Inga Breton, talk to us a little bit about item J.
No comments, just wanted to separate both.
Okay. So could I have a motion to accept consensus motion J?
G.
G.
I'll make motion to waive reading and adopt policy CC 001, Code of Conduct.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Bear with me here.
Advisory boards.
Yeah. So the advisory boards and commissions, that's the next item on the agenda. And this is the time when we get to talk about the various commissions. So Councilmember Swedberg is a liaison to the Economic Development Commission. Colleen?
I have two to report on, the EDC and the EPC. So there was a lot going on for two nights in a row. So I'll try to summarize, and I hope I get it right. Ryan, on the EDC, which happened on March 2nd, Ryan from Mindot came and did a big presentation on all the projects going on around Oakdale. It will be another year of road construction. The first one that I got from his presentation was 694 and 94 interchange for the Gold Line Helmer in Beulenburg area and the 4th Street Bridge. Cloverleafs will be closed. People will have to use the 10th Street ramps in Oakdale and the Tamrec exit like we did previously where they shut those down. You had to go up there and come back. Then another one is 94 overlays from Woodbury to Hudson will be starting in July. So there'll be lanes closed going each direction. Then there's the third one, the Highway 120 between 94 and 694. There's studying to see what they can do about widening in the area, the bike paths, bike ped, you know, areas, et cetera. And then also talked about closing off more access, 'cause right now, a lot of, you can enter 120 in too many locations. So they're hoping that that would cut down if you limit that. So, and then, of course, the big project is the 120 and 36 intersection. What to do with that. But both items, three and four, there is no funding for those projects yet. So they're still in the studying and getting more engagement. There's some engagement that has started, but there's more going on than that.
Very good.
Okay. So the EPC, which happened on Thursday, May 3rd, there was lots of items on that one, too. I will just mention a few of them. The EV ordinance, Shannon came, and it was reviewed by the commissioners. They had some suggestions on rewording to clarify some items. And so then, number two was the Norhart apartment updates, Lot R5, you know, some updates with the 321 apartment complex going in. So that happened. And then there was the church development on 4.2 acres at Hamlin and Stillwater Boulevard. There was several surrounding neighbors that showed up for the meeting with some concerns with water draining issues, noise, and lighting pollution, along with traffic concerns. Church is addressing those. And the commissioners had an issue with the valet parking that, that they had made arrangement with Canvas Health, that's across the street from Stillwater Boulevard, that people were, they were concerned and safety issues about having the runners drive the cars over there and then running back across Stillwater Boulevard. So there was some suggestions to go back and look at the parking and see if they can get more parking in the current lot. And, and basically, what the commission did was put it on hold and asked them to come back with some revised plans. Okay?
Very good. Well, thank you very much. So that was the Economic Development Commission and the Planning Commission.
Yep.
So on the Parks and Recreation Commission, there was no meeting. The Environmental Management Commission, there was no meeting. And the Tree Board, there was no meeting. And I'm thinking, Councilmember Swedberg, with the Mindot representative, there's also the improvement project for Highway 36 from Edgerton.
Yes, all the way.
All the way over to Stillwater Road, which is long overdue, and that's a surface overlay, I believe.
Yeah, that's a surface overlay, too.
Sometime this summer.
Yep.
Let's move into staff reports. And city engineer.
Mr. Mayor, we have Dave Hutton here helping from SEH tonight. He's standing in for Todd Blank, who is our interim engineer as we transition here. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Hutton.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council and staff. Yes, Dave Hutton with SEH. And if you need my address, it's 10400 Yellow Circle Drive in Minnetaka. That's our company address. And I'm the substitute interim city engineer. There's such a position, but I told Todd I had covered. I enjoy this a lot, because in my previous life, I was a city engineer for many, many years in Shakopee, Minnesota, and so I enjoy interacting with councils. Tonight's agenda item is really standard special assessment 429 process. It is to accept a petition for the Willbrook development and, and order the improvements. The council can accept a public improvement if there's more than 35% of the landowners that have submitted a petition. In this case, I believe it's 100% because it is a developer. They are requesting that the city install the public street and storm sewer, sidewalk trail, and lighting improvements within that subdivision. We've also gotten, we, the city's gotten a proposal from Alliant Engineering to actually prepare the feasibility report and the plans and specifications, and conduct the bidding and administer the construction improvements. So I'll come back to that, but first, I'll deal with the petition for public improvements. So again, this pertains to the Willbrook master planned unit development, and they are agreeing to be assessed for their share of the cost. That's the purpose of the petition. The city will install them and assess it back to the developer. The amount that will be assessed is $1,229,459,000 for the roadway and storm portions of 40th Street. They will be levied against outlots E, F, and G in equal installments, that we've all three will get the same amount. And so that will be recovered and paid back. The assessment will be paid back over eight years. That's the terms that were set forth with the city and the developer, and they waive all their rights under the chapter 429 statute for special assessments. So it's a pretty routine action. The action is there's a resolution that would declare the adequacy of the petition and accept and authorize the preparation of a feasibility report. Again, this is the first step in the legal 429 process for any special assessment project. I believe there might be a second action, which would be to approve the contract with Alliant or the proposal to do the work, the design work. I'm not sure if that requires a second action or if it's all under one action, but it's not part of your resolution. So I think what we're asking for tonight is, one, adopt the resolution which accepts the petition, orders the feasibility, and then, two, approve the proposal with Alliant Engineering to do the work.
Something about two, two different actions.
Mr. Mayor, Dave, we do have it as one.
Okay.
One action, the action requested.
Okay.
Is both the, you know, order the feasibility report, approve the proposal.
And approving.
And accept the petition. Jim Thompson, city attorney, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I stand corrected. I am here for any questions.
So go ahead and just talk, if you would, about the proposal for the design work, since we're gonna take action on that at the same time.
Sure. And that's, the total amount of the proposal is, hold on, let me get that, I believe it's $194,660. And it covers preparing the plans, preparing the feasibility report, first of all, bringing that back to council, but then also preparing the plans and specifications, getting it ready for bids, bidding it, and then overseeing the construction. So there's six separate tasks entailed within that $195,000. And so the first step is to get the feasibility report. There are scheduled calls for that report to come back to council April 8th. At that point, you would accept the report and order the plans, and then Alliant would move into designing the plans and specifications. They are proposing that it would be ready for bids by May 2nd. Open bid is May 24th, and then start construction June 14th. I believe Alliant is doing the design for the rest of the development, if I'm not mistaken, through the developer. And so in this case, it made sense to use them to do the city portion of the roadway within the development that's already designed. So I think that's the logic behind using Alliant, as Todd explained it to me.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you. Counselors, you anything for Mr. Hutton? Okay, could I have a motion then, please?
Make motion waiving, adopt resolution number 2022, accepting the petition, ordering a feasibility report, and approving the proposal between Alliant Engineering and the city of Oakdale in an amount not to exceed $194,660 for city project 2022-02, the 40th Street improvements.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion passes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And good night. Mr. Thompson, time with our city attorney. Do you have anything for us tonight?
Mayor, members of council, nothing specific to report, but happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Counselors, anything for Jim? Very good. Next up is time with the city administrator, Ms. Volkers.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll take any questions separate from this, if, if there are any. Otherwise, I do have a resolution I'd like to propose tonight, and I'll read the, kind of, the highlights of it, if that's okay. Being it wasn't in the packet, it's kind of timely because the legislature is in session. They have a hearing on Thursday on a proposed Senate, on language on a bill, Senate File 126 and Senate File 127. It relates, or it affects our residents in Oakdale, some of the residents along 694. And what the bill is, a bill for an act related to transportation. It appropriates money to build noise barriers in the Department of Transportation's Metro District along the marked highway 694 in Oakdale. So the resolution would read, "Whereas, Oakdale residents have shared concerns with noise along Interstate 694, and whereas, the Oakdale, Oakdale mayor and city council members understand the concerns of residents about noise along the highway, and now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Oakdale hereby support state legislation that would provide funding for noise barriers along Interstate 694 that would be of benefit to Oakdale residents." So with that, I am proposing that the council consider passing that resolution, and then the mayor will be attending the hearing on Thursday in front of the Senate, and will speak to the support of the city council if it passes.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. Counselors, any questions for Chris on the resolution? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make motion waiving, adopt resolution number 2022, demonstrating city support for Senate File 126 and 127.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, anything else?
Not unless anybody has any further questions.
Counselors, you anything for Ms. Volkers? Very good, thank you. Next up on our agenda then is time for the counselors to talk about anything that they're involved in or make a presentation. I think I'll start down on my left with Councilmember Zabel.
Nothing for me.
Councilmember Swedberg.
Just wanna bring up about the landscape revival for the native plants, and that is happening June 4th. It is the first Saturday in June from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Fire Station 1. So hope to see everyone there. It's a great event.
Very good. Anything else?
Uh-uh.
For me, it's an expression of appreciation for the public works, men and women. Once again, one comment from my neighbors, surprised at how quickly the snow was removed off the streets since past weekend. So thank you very much to, to your crews. I think also, whenever there's that type of a snowfall or that type of a weather event, and our police officers and our fire responders, EMTs, are also busy. So thank you both for the police officers and the firefighters, EMTs. Councilmember Olson.
Nothing for me today.
Councilmember Inga Breton.
Nothing for me.
Very good. So then finally, we have the summary of claim rosters. These are for the claims from February 19th, 2022 through March 4th, 2022. These claims amount to $578,292.36. Upon review, counselors, did you see anything that you have a question about? Could I have a motion then, please?
Motion to approve claims is presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then those claims are approved as presented. Thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and good night.